Meetings called to order, the run meeting. Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as both the notices in Barrow Hall, Runway Post Office, Mary Gold School, Align Benning School, Grex Dyeran School, and the Runway Public School District website. Please rise and join me in the presence of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Farrey.
Her babysitter, Bia.
Ms. Penzrilla.
Ms. Smith.
Ema.
Ms. Rella.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Also present, Mark Aignucci Superintendent, Sean McCarron Board Secretary Business Administrator, Earl DeSala Business Consultant, Jay Yezzi Principal Benning MacDannan School, Steve Peely Principal Mary Gold School, Lori Hines Child Study Team Supervisor, and Butch Brunner Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need approval of minutes, approval of minutes for April 28th, special session, April 28th work session, April 28th regular, then April 28th executive.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Chaz. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
I'm staying.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
I will be on the same roll.
Ms. Rella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. At this time, I need a motion for the financial report.
I'll make a motion for the financial report.
Motion made by Angel.
Seconded.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Rella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. At this time, we have a special presentation of Student Council and the Youth Mayor Council students from Wolf School. So students wouldn't mind standing up right now. Ms. Passio, if you would mind, um...
Sure.
...with a summary of events, please, if you could just introduce yourself.
Um, I think, excuse me, I think Brittany was going to comment first, just about three minutes on student life here, or maybe a minute, depending on the time.
We were just here three weeks ago, give her a break.
Yeah, I know, no time limit, sorry. Just a couple, a couple things that are going on around Wolf these days, and then she'll also chime in for the Youth Mayor Council.
My name is Brittany Walsh, and I am the President of the Student Council here at Mary Gold. Here are some recent activities that have happened in the last two weeks of school. Youth Mayor and Council finished off their week of being town officials. As you can tell by my shirt, I was in it. In my opinion, it was a great experience surrounded by history. I learned a lot. It was an inspiring and educational experience that will have everlasting compassion. Last Thursday, the Mary Gold Drama Department put on a play entitled Alice at Wonderland. It was one of the best plays put on by Mary Gold, and it got everyone to laugh. The fifth grade and the preschoolers went on their class trips. Today was Battle of the Books competition. Tomorrow's the fourth grade girls' night out. This week, our teachers and Mr. Wink got together to show us what hawks reach for success for them by planning games and learning what it takes to be a team. As for upcoming events, this Friday, music department will go to a music competition, and then they will go to sixth class. Next week, the men of distinction and women of action will go on their trip. The seventh graders go on their class trip to the Eastern State Penitentiary, and it will be another Battle of the Books competition. June at Jam went to eighth grade dance, June fair for all students, including the preschool, the eighth grade trip, and the eighth grade graduation. I, as well as the rest of the students, am looking forward to many exciting activities coming up. Thank you.
Brittany, what aren't you involved in? Every time I turn around for extra period, so I commend you for everything and how you work.
And then, Brittany, if you want to just remain standing, if you and Brock and Naomi and Ms. Passio want to just talk about some of the events of the Youth Mayor Council week, we appreciate it. Again, no time limit, if you need to.
Okay, I'll go first. I'm Councilwoman Patty Passio, and I am Director of Public Events. Each year, we offer eighth grade students the opportunity to become part of the governing body, and this has been going on for forty years or so. We are the only town and only municipality that does this for a whole week, and it is an opportunity for the kids to see how, that our job isn't as easy as people think that it is, that, and what we do to govern, to govern the town. We took them on trips, and you can explain our trips, and they all showed up at council meetings, and they got to see probably one of the best council meetings that we'll ever have, and it was our police chief resigning and, and a new police chief taking over. So, and we got to see all our men in blue, so that was just a wonderful experience, I think, for them. They got to go to a few trips, and I think, I think it was a good experience. They were wonderful kids, they were well behaved, I enjoyed them, and I think they learned a lot. They, they did a report that was absolutely phenomenal. You know, if you thought that they weren't listening, or they weren't paying attention, the, the closing night was, you knew that they were. And then we all got to go to the Philly diner and have something good to eat, so, okay, it's your turn, Brock.
So, I'm just saying, we went to the Trenton State Capitol, and they showed up, just doing everything, and I went to the state library, and we told them what things, like different activities were there, and then the state Capitol, and we walked around, and there was the Constitution Center, and, and then, we went to see the Library Bell, and like, take the people that stopped and went and put in words about the history of the Library Bell, and went to the Sparrow Building, and...
Forest Building.
Forest Building, and...
They had lunch.
And then we went to the Great Side of the Wall.
Brittany, covered it all pretty much. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys, you guys have involved a lot of activities, I appreciate the girls taking time out to share with us, and you did a nice job here.
Thank you.
The experience lasted a long time. And thank you to the Barrow for continuing to do this. I, I told Councilwoman Passio that I did this in 1992, and it's a memory that I have, that, you know...
And next year, we'll have a presentation with you, and...
Oh, I told you, I would be more than, more than happy to help you guys find, and I think that we always are well represented, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
At this time, we are open for public comment on agenda items only. The public is reminded that they should... Thanks, ladies, you too. Have a good night.
Memorial Day celebration of 26th by Halloween.
Any problems or complaints related to contact with staff member or members involved there, and Chief School Administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education, complaint shall be brought to the Board after appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics addressed on the published agenda and limited, limited in length to three minutes. So at this time, does anyone have any questions or comments on the public agenda? No? Okay. Secretaries' report, do you have anything to add?
Um, it's been a busy month. We have a number of our grant applications due by June 30th. The date has been moved up because of timelines changing, so we're currently in the process of working at that. We are finishing up with our systems 3000 trainees and the cross training that's taking place in the business office across all members within the business office. This evening during executive session, there, a lot will be presented. We have all of our requests for quotes that came in regarding different individuals for next year, auditor, solicitor, all of those individuals. We've been working with Black Chris Pike Regional, see if there's any shared service opportunities that we might be missing out on that would benefit both districts alike. And I attended a number of different workshops within the county to, for both my mentoring and also for business-related items to make sure that people are represented.
Thank you. I know, I know that we were only here a few short weeks ago, Mr. Aignucci, and, and Dr. McCarron just had a list, I mean, I will present. Just to...
Thanks, Dr. McCarron. Thank you. As of May 16th, we may, our four weeks of students, which again, ten hours of replacements, for the next seven weeks, as I said in the report, the administrative team is basically moving on daily basis, it seems like, it's our first year together, and closing out a school year, we'll make sure we have other things in place. I want to publicly thank all the administrators this year for working so hard, as well as their support team in their offices, because you never know, this is your first year, you know. Youth Business Administrator, Supervisor, brand new principals at those schools, it's been a very successful year in my eyes, I want to publicly thank them, and they know me, I probably wouldn't say great things about you, but they do work extremely hard, go above and beyond. And that's just basically, that's right. One of the things, a great undertaking for a administrator is those summer evaluations, which I attached a copy of, I want to thank all the managers for working on that, and they're in the middle of their summer evaluations with all teaching staff, not something that are done remotely, Mr. Buckheim, they're doing it face to face.
Right. You're my contact.
Exactly.
Yes.
And a good reflective piece, we did have a DACT meeting this morning, with, you know, members of the teaching staff, administrative team, parents as well, to discuss how everything's been going, I think the evaluation process is going well. I think it's with advanced planning of the team, we've been able to handle all these new things that have come down on us this year, which I can't say for all districts, but again, commend them on their job for doing that. End of your activities, fortunate enough to attend the author's team today at Downing Schools, I want to appreciate, thank those teachers who had me out for that, as well as some other highlights, as I said, the third grade transition activities are underway, I believe, in June, with the orientation here at Wolf's on the third, for the students from Benning MacDannan, walk under the supervision of the Runway Police Department to get here, and they meet the administrative staff, counselors, and everything else to make that transition for them easier. Also, the kindergarten orientations are also held at first week of June as well. Mrs. Yezzi, I know this year, for this last year, before she officially joined this, she had an idea of what that's going to look like. And then, as we said earlier, eighth grade dance is coming up, you're all more than welcome to attend the preview, which I believe is at six o'clock, the doors open, if you want to see what the PTA does with that, all for sure, it's always pretty cool. And then graduation, also, all board members are attend, are welcome to attend on June 16th at Triton, 6:45, I believe, the slideshow begins, so then, seven o'clock, the ceremony will begin, so please, I encourage you to come out for that.
A question, no question.
Yes.
As board members, is there a specific area you can come, you want to gather some?
Yeah, so it's always, they always, there's a designated area.
Still at the bottom of the slide?
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Caution tape, though. We'll just caution tape.
If you could do me a favor and let Mrs. Marker know, you'll definitely be attending, so that way she can make sure that everything's in order, but please don't just show up that evening. If you are coming, please let Mrs. Marker know as soon as possible.
Sorry. And as far as my own professional development, I completed my new Super Tense Academy back in April, which was an interesting experience, the last session I felt was the best, that session on strategic planning, taking some of those things I learned in that, and we're going to work on some strategic planning as an administrative team over the summer. I do appreciate policies, as I said, we will not be handling policies moving forward in the fashion that we did tonight, we will have the traditional two readings for each policy, but tonight, we were able to get our policy book back up to date, this was the best way we could, so I want to publicly thank Mrs. Wilson, ladies and gentlemen. Those of you who drive by on weekends and nights and everything else, used to see them here, did work on them. And then, as Brittany said, the play last week, Alice at Wonderland, the kids had a great time with that, Mrs. Lucas Excudet did a great job. That's, that's an undertaking, drama is an undertaking, these sports are here for, well into the late afternoon, and set design, the teachers helped them, did a great job, so that is my...
Thank you. A tax, you'll, we also read and asked questions earlier on the principals' reports, the fire and security drill reports, supervisor, curriculum and instruction, nurses, building grounds report, special education report, but I believe, Ms. Rella, you said that you had, like, a public, you wanted to publicly...
Yes, I just, yeah, I know, it's work from behind the scenes, I understand, it takes a lot for these special little programs in one, at the elementary level for these children, and the jump rope for the heart is a phenomenal undertaking, and an event for the kids, they really get excited about things like that. Again, amazed at the over $2,000 from each school that was raised for jump rope for the heart, and I just want to publicly, you know, thank the nurses, of course, Mrs. Moore, Mrs. Feldman, and your helping staff there, Ms. Cristella, Ms. Dorachi, and I don't know whether anybody else helped Mrs. Feldman at Downing School or not, but, you know, your efforts and your caring ways, and of course, Mrs. Yezzi, her support as well, just to make these programs happen. I think it's important for these kids at such a young age to give back. I mean, just a, just a personal story, signing, signing my donation sheet for my grandson, and I just said, his name was at the top of the list, and I said to him, "Oh, what's this?" And he said, "I got money out of my PIB to give you for this." And, oh, there you go, that's why, that's why it works.
PTA report, is there anything?
Yep, we are wrapping up this year, beginning to plan for next year already. We are continuing to assist with the class trips, they've been going really smoothly. We'll be reaching out to the building principals to see if there's any way to help maybe go through their next year, whether, Mrs. Danny and I spoke about maybe doing some of the trips that they, that they would like to take in the fall, that might be helpful on a couple of different things, so we talked about that. And getting feedback from the parents, they've been really excited, the children have been excited about the trips, so that's been great. Again, the year activities, we will be providing a snack for each one of the buildings for all the children in the district, whether it's, before, in the past, we've done ice cream trucks, things like that, we're just ironing out the details, but that will be during either the June fair here, or the field days at the elementary schools, we just have to iron out exactly what our day. And the eighth grade culminating activities, we will be providing the scholarship that we've done in the past to, to eighth grade students, and we will, of course, be transforming the gymnasium, or the APR room that weekend, so it's been, that is actually my project this year, because my son, Ryan, is in eighth grade, and it's been fantastic to work with everybody and to see the volunteers that are coming out, so we're excited.
Thank you. Thank you for all your time, everyone. Camden County Education Services, I think probably did, did they meet?
I did check through the website.
Yeah, they, they don't meet, they...
No update.
Yep, I, I remember that well.
I was a little disappointed, because it was something I was really looking forward to.
It's really only one, possibly two meetings per, per year, so it's not you, it's just the way that they work.
Right.
They can't easily get a quorum, usually it's on the phone, so it's, it's always an issue.
Okay, that's interesting, okay.
New Jersey School Boards?
Yes. I was up at the delegate assembly conference, which was on the 17th of May, and we had four resolutions that were discussed and voted upon, and all four were approved. If I could just kind of touch on each one a little bit, again, this is a resolution that New Jersey School Board Association supports, it's not legal, it's not a statute or any law. The first resolution, resolution was that the NJASBA believes that New Jersey's school finance system should provide full funding for state-initiated programs designed to promote innovation, and that the level of participation in such programs should be determined by the local school district. This particular resolution was initiated by Glassboro School District, and their, their push was not only that the state mandates the same funding, Glassboro does not like the idea of, districts being told how many out of district children they can bring in. There was quite a bit of a debate on this one, because two different districts, predominantly up in central New Jersey, felt that they didn't like the idea of excluding limitations, because they both, these particular districts, both have had experiences where another district is running special programs, so the children come in there so that they get to athletes, but it did pass, and we'll see where it goes from there.
I believe Glassboro has its special programs as well, so it's probably not a...
The second resolution, and that passed by over 9% majority, we had 162 delegate assembly members present, so there was a lot of support. Second resolution was that NJASBA believes that policies regarding professional development, including staff, attendance at conferences, workshops, and conventions should be locally negotiated. The provision of paid leave for any reinvestment to attend professional development programs should also be determined locally and not dictated by the state. This was initiated by Reddington Township Board of Ed, and the reason why they wanted to have this resolution go through, and it did, but this one went through with the least number of supported votes, at, at just 80%, it doesn't sound like a lot, but usually these things go through 97, 98% approval. This district's upset in the fact that the vast majority of their teachers were at teacher convention, and yet they do not attend the conference in Atlantic City, and they feel instead of it being mandated by the state, that the local school district should be able to negotiate that with their contracts, determine whether or not that's going to be two days off the school. Some statistics that they threw out with their research was that in 2013, this past year, only 17% of all teachers in the city of Jersey attended the Atlantic City Conference, and then over the past 10 years, the average attendance has been between 12 and 15%. I voted no on this, and the reason why I voted no, I didn't know if it was legal, since this is a state-run conference, I didn't know if we legally say you can't go to conferences state, you're all going to stay here and, and do it in-service in-house. It did pass by over 79%, which was the lowest of the four resolutions, but again, I wanted my fellow board members to know, I, I voted yes on three of the four resolutions. This one I didn't, because I didn't, I wasn't sure of the legality, and there's no abstention votes at the Assembly, it's Naomi, it's either a yes or no vote. So not knowing legally if they could actually push this, I felt at this point, I'd rather step back and say no. So that was the vote. Okay. Third resolution was submitted by Hamilton Township. The NJASBA believes that preschool education should not be mandated by the state unless state funds are provided to meet the needs for your facilities or your school districts, and that passed by about 98%, and I'll be a yes vote there. The state has a wonderful way of mandating programs, but not funding them.
Yeah, we all know that.
The last resolution, NJASBA believes statutory language and listed should be revised to expand the voting rights of sending school district representatives on matters before the receiving district Board of Education that include anything that has an impact on their students. This particular, I don't know if it's a statute, but it was in 1994, and it hasn't been revised since then, and basically what this, they were asking in this resolution, is if, let's say you are sending 5% of your student population to another district because of programs they have, you cannot go to, you cannot have a representative go to those meetings and vote on anything that has an impact on the students. This resolution, by passing it, what they're saying is if a district sends a percentage of the students to another school district because of programs you may not offer that they do, that they have to allow one of your district's board members to sit at the meetings, and any decisions that are going to impact your students that are attending that new district, you have a right to vote on those items. And that, that was also true by almost a 90%. So those were the resolutions that were discussed, agreed with, and voted on, and our next meeting will be coming up in the fall.
Thank you very much for attending. Black Chris Pike, the news player, should be coming shortly, it's always like a month behind, so you guys, and we'll print that out again, so you can read everything that's happening at all preschools. Negotiations, I believe, we're going, we're going to be talking in, okay, anything else? I just want to say publicly that the school board candidacy, if you're petitioned for, if you would like to run, or anyone who would like to run, is due, Dr. McCarron, help me out.
It is due July 28th, 2014.
July 28th, and must be delivered to Camden, so please, if you know anyone, this is going to be posted on our...
Board of Education website, so you click on the link for Board of Education.
So, just wanted to remind all the board members considering...
Link is on Facebook.
Some of us were running down, but they all, there's...
Yeah, I think a couple of us worked.
A couple of us, all right. So then, we'll move along to property and transportation. I need a motion to approve items number one to three.
I'll make a motion to approve items...
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Rella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one through 10.
I'll make a motion to approve items number one through 10.
Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Pat.
Especially good.
Any questions?
Just saying.
At this time, I'd also like to publicly wish Ms. Leslie Jenkins and Mary Ann Boland, who've worked here for many, many years, good luck in their retirement, so if you could please let them know, principals, that we wish them the best. If there's no questions, I need a roll call. I had invited Ms. Jenkins, was my speech... Seconded by Patty. I adore her, so, yeah, I'm proud of her.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Penzrilla.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Rella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Finance, I need a motion to approve items number one through nine.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Pat. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Penzrilla.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Rella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Curriculum, I need a motion to approve items one through four.
I'll make a motion to approve one through four.
Motion made by Pat.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Is, someone please explain exactly to us and the public what this open-mate's leadership program is all about.
Yeah, we did...
This, I remember.
Yeah. We did a presentation earlier, but you want, or, I gave you literature, but you want to...
Yeah, sure, it's a free program, it's basically volunteers that come in and strengthen our literacy program by reading to students who are identified as either being struggling readers, or maybe students who, at home, don't have that one-on-one support, and they're not being read to at home as much as we want them to be, so it's really just an organization of fabulous people I've worked with in the past that come and work with our students, and basically read, and just promote the love of reading, and support all the goals that we have at Benning MacDannan. They pretty much max out around second and third grade, or we would have taken it over the gates as well, but I did meet with her, and I did submit some, um, I think the right website, if you want to check it out, just some background information on them.
One, yes, that, okay.
Yeah, it, I think you'd really be interested in reading about it, too, it's just, they're just a great group of people, are very professional, um, they kind of just manage themselves almost, you know, and they kind of become like permanent fixtures in your building, and again, just another way to...
Dude, I was actually at open-mate for years, and I actually do background checks and everything, and just so you know, they probably know...
Yeah, we've been around...
The county, the county, so we're all...
I love that, so probably in like Corey districts, and then around these three counties, and just great to have around. Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Penzrilla.
Yes.
Yes. Obviously, we do not have anything for policy this evening because we had a special meeting that we took care of everything. And again, thank you, Mrs. Wilson, for all of your help in getting that together.
Thank you for the ice pack, after the pot fell on my foot, you know, when I...
At this time, we are open for public comment on any non-agenda or non-agenda item. This time, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, I, we will need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lynn.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Whereas while the Senate Byron and Mayor Open Public Meetings Act requires all meetings of the Rummy School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA 10:4-12B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. And whereas the Rummy Public School District Board of Education has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are accepted from the public, and whereas the nine exceptions to the public meetings set forth in NJSA 10:4-12B are listed below. And next to each exception is a box within which the number of issues to be privately discussed that fall within that exception shall be written. And after each exception is a space where additional information that will disclose as much information about the decision as possible without undermining the purpose of the exception shall be written. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Rummy Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12B. Any collective bargaining agreement or the terms and conditions of which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including the negotiation of terms and conditions with employees or representation, representatives, excuse me, of employees of the public body, specifically the RDA contract and salary guides. Also, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party. Any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege, privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer, specifically shared service agreements and requests for proposals. And the third matter is any matter involving the appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of appointment, evaluation of the performance, promotion, or disciplining of any specific prospective public officer or employee or current public officer or employee employed or appointed by the public body unless all individual employees or appointees whose rights could be adversely affected request in writing that such matter or matters be discussed at a public meeting. More specifically, non-represented positions will be discussed this evening. Whereas the length of executive session is undetermined, however, the Rummy Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of the session prior to convening, the session after which a public meeting shall reconvene at 8:35 PM. That's an approximate. And the Rummy Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business tonight. Most likely, we will be coming back to proceed with business. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Rummy Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Rummy Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects may be made public at a time when the Rummy Public School District Board of Education Attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Rummy Public School District Board of Education, for the aforementioned reasons, hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the above discussion shall take place and hereby directs the board secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the term of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the board secretary on the next business day following this meeting shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one of the fees allowed by NJSA 47:1A-1. Action on any item may or may not be taken in open session at the conclusion of this executive session. All in favor to go into executive session? So, at this time, we have returned to public session already. I need a motion to ratify the contract and salary guides provided by the RDA on file with board secretary for teachers and instructional leads beginning with the 13, 14 school year and commencing with the 15, 16 school year. Salaries will be adjusted for the 13, 14 school year and previously approved employees will be advanced with appropriate steps in the guide for the 14, 15 school year.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Pat Smith, seconded by Pat Adair. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Terrell?
Yes.
Make that happen.
Make that happen.
That was my quote.
Make that happen.
All right. Number two, I need a motion to approve Etna for the 2014, 2015 school year based on quotes provided by Brown and Brown Associates.
I'll make that, oh, no, Chaz. No, you make it, I'll second it.
Motion made by...
Ladies, go first.
All right.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Chaz. Roll call.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Terrell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Need to approve the secretary custodial and hourly salary guides effective July 1, 2013 through June 30 of 2016. Current employee salaries will be adjusted for the 13, 14 school year.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Pat.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Falton?
Yes. Number four, approve the following secretary, approve the secretary on custodial employees for the 2014, 2015 school year.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Sorry.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Terrell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Approve the solicitor, physician, auditor, and architect for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz, seconded by Naomi.
I got you.
Naomi's good. Bro, she's a master board member, you better watch out for her.
Master.
This was done through RFQs obtained by the district.
Fair and open process, it's called.
Fair and open process, it's called.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Falton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Approve a shared service agreement for food preparation services with Black Horse Pike Regional School District.
Yes, I second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Maria. Roll call.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Falton?
I need a motion to approve the restructuring of cafeteria worker hours.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi.
Ms. Dare?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe? Ms. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Penzrill?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Just a reminder that is it for this evening. The next regular Board of Education meeting date is June 18th. Our work session will go back to six o'clock, regular meeting seven o'clock. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Patty, all in favor. I have it, meeting adjourned at 9:03. Thank you for being here.